...for all of us when I tell you that we view this as an early Christmas present. I also want to thank our Longmont team that has worked tirelessly to get us to this point. They have planned and carried out events, educated at farmers markets and other places, collected signatures, and rallied. Our signature tally is real close to sixteen hundred, plus fifty postcards that were directed to Mayor Coombs. At the SRL Candidate Forum, we asked whether the candidates would commit to one hundred percent. Almost every candidate committed to this, showing us broad support for this initiatives at the SRL Forum and also at other election events. Team members and those who support us in this goal, take a second and stand up, and thank you very much. Also on my list to thank is the people of this community. When we were out talking, we heard a resounding yes, we need to move to renewable energy. The first weekend we collected signatures was the week that the U.S. pulled out of the Paris Climate Agreement. People were practically grabbing the clipboards out of our hands to say that they know that we need to move away from fossil fuels. This community understands that climate change will come here, not just in heat, forest fires, and droughts, but also in devastating floods. Residents here also realize that if we don't want fracking, we can't continue our reliance on fossil fuels. When we talked to small businesses, we found they also realized that this is urgent, that we make this transition. We thank them for their support as well. A thank you is also made to the organizations that supported us and cheered us on. City Council members, it is now up to you to develop and enact a resolution that will state in no uncertain terms that we want only one hundred percent renewable energy for generation of our electricity. I also challenge you to make sure that our transition to one hundred percent is a just transition, ensuring that no one is left behind as we move forward. I commit to you that our team will continue their grassroots efforts. We will work closely with the community to talk about what a true fossil-free future looks like. City Council and city staff, let us know how we can work together. We need to think broadly about how the transportation system will be electrified, how we are incentivizing people who use rooftop solar or maybe convert to an electric water heater, how can we build homes and apartments that don't use fossil fuels, and how do we support businesses that are ready to make this leap? We are ready for one hundred and are excited to make this journey with you. Thank you very much.
Abby Driscoll.
I live at thirteen oh four Lupine Court. And good evening, Mayor Bagley, distinguished members of City Council. Thank you, Karen, for your thoughtful comments and your outstanding leadership of our Renewable Energy Committee as part of Sustainable Resilient Longmont. It's been an honor to stand side by side with you in this grassroots effort to support the city of Longmont's transition to a clean energy future. Thank you to Mayor Bagley for taking this initiative to bring this proclamation forward. Indeed, as Karen mentioned, our group has been working together for almost a year to educate and inform the community about the opportunities before us to move away from our reliance on greenhouse gas emitting fossil fuels. The people of Longmont are behind us and with us on this effort. Through our work, Sustainable Resilient Longmont succeeded in raising this as an issue that matters to the people of Longmont. I'm very proud that banding together, we were able to give the residents of Longmont a voice. Margaret Mee's well-known reflection on social change rings true to me in this moment. Never doubt that a small group of thoughtful, committed citizens can change the world. Indeed, it's the only thing that ever has. I'm doing this work because I care about our planet, and I believe that we need to be doing everything we can to reduce the disastrous effects of climate change. That's what this is about, climate change. I hope the city of Longmont will further its commitment to a clean energy future with a resolution that is based on the premise of climate change and our commitment to moving to clean energy alternatives, including solar and wind. In addition, I hope that the resolution will call in staff to be deliberate about working with vulnerable populations to ensure, as Karen mentioned, a just transition to one hundred percent renewable in Longmont. I have seen the data, and I know that with technological advances, electricity from wind and solar will actually be cheaper than burning coal or natural gas. This is not only about energy costs, though. This is also about climate justice. I don't know if you all have heard that term. We must ensure that the clean energy economy does not leave anyone behind. I'm thinking about the people in our community who are most vulnerable to the harmful consequences of climate change, for example, mobile home parks that suffer the most in the aftermath of the 2013 flood. I look forward to continuing to work with City Council, the mayor, Longmont Power and Communications, the Sustainability Office, Community Services, the Platt River Para Authority, and the community of Longmont to realize this goal of a just transition to one hundred percent renewable energy by 2030. Thank you again, Mayor Bagley, for taking this important action that gets us one step closer to this goal. Thank you.
Steve Stabell.
Good evening, Mayor Bagley and Council members. My name is Steve Stabell, and I reside at eight four four nine North Seventy-Nine Street, Longmont. Thank you, Mayor Bagley, for your personal commitment to the goal of one hundred percent clean renewable electricity production by 2030. As you might know, there are forty-seven cities, four counties, and one state that are committed to one hundred percent renewable energy goal. In fact, Burlington, Vermont, Georgetown, Texas, Rockport, Missouri, and Kodiak Island, Alaska have already achieved one hundred percent renewable energy. In Colorado, we have more than four hundred times more energy capacity than needed to achieve this goal. With energy storage prices continuing to decrease, the one hundred percent goal might even come sooner than 2030 if we have the will to accomplish the task. The bonus of reaching this goal is that it will stabilize electric rates for Longmont power customers. Unlike fossil fuels, there are no fuel costs associated with clean energy electricity production. Right now, wind and utility-scale solar are the most cost-effective means to produce electricity, and renewable production costs will continue to fall. Hockey great Wayne Gretzky said that I go to where the puck is going, not to where it's been. Clean energy, clean renewable energy is where the puck is going. Thank you very much.
Aaron Arnold.
My name is Aaron Arnold. I'm at twenty-seven sixteen Mountain View. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for having us tonight and the opportunity to speak. This morning, my boss quoted Megan Wheatley, and I loved this term. She was talking about islands of sanity, and that really struck me. It derailed my whole plan for what I was going to say today because a lot of people feel, I think maybe everybody I know feels like the world is going crazy, a little crazy pants these days. What we can do is we can build an island of sanity here, and I feel like we have taken the right step today toward building that island of sanity. And as we move forward, we can take refuge in each other and in our community because this is what we can do. We can make changes here and make this the community we want it to be. So what does that look like? Well, it looks like buying Google stock in two thousand and five is what it looks like. If you see that energy, clean energy jobs are growing at a rate twelve times our GDP right now. Oil and gas jobs are diminishing. This is per Fortune Magazine, CNN Money Watch. We can build this island of sanity by making good decisions one at a time, and I'm so proud of my town, I'm so proud of this group and of you, Mayor, for making this decision because this reflects the will of the people, it reflects the world that I want to live in, and reflects the sanity that I want to work for. So thank you, and thank my group that I've been working with, and thank all of you, and thanks for having me.
Gene Bassett.
My name is Gene Bassett. I'm the Senior Associate with Environment Colorado. We've also been very active on this issue and just basically can repeat all the things that people have already said. So thank you, Mayor Bagley, for your proposal. It is time to move into the twenty-first century. I joke, why would we still be using disseminated dinosaur bones? They're even called fossil fuels. We have the technology. You're probably familiar with the National Renewable Energy Lab. I'm actually going to be there tomorrow. The advancements that have been made are unbelievable, and that's why you already have places like Aspen, Colorado, and Greensburg, Kansas are both already gone, one hundred percent renewable-like, and some of the other places that were already mentioned. So it'd be great to have Longmont also lead the way on this effort and move forward for our future, and so we make sure that for generations to come, we're using the right type of technologies.
Thank you. Joan Gregerson.
Good evening, Mayor Bagley and Council members. In nineteen seventy-eight, I went to the University of Colorado and said, I want to study solar energy. And they said, we don't have it. And I was like, that's ridiculous. My dad was petroleum engineer. I grew up, from age ten, I started plotting oil and gas production curves. And I was plotting them on log paper. You get out to a certain point, grab a log curve, and they go down. I was like, Dad, this is ridiculous. What are you guys doing? And he assured me that he was telling them, this is important, this is something we need to work on. So I've been focusing on energy efficiency and renewables since that time, and that's been forty years. I had the opportunity to work in progressive cities, like for Fort Collins Utilities. I worked for E Source in Boulder. I worked in Denver for programs for Xcel Energy. But in two thousand and thirteen, I got an offer to work in Longmont. And about two weeks later was the flood. And so when I was telling people, I got a new job, and they said, where is it? And I said, Longmont. And they're like, wait, isn't it underwater? It's like, yeah, but it'll be fine. And it is. But when I started working, so there was just this huge flood. I moved here and said, okay, I want to start, you know, being part of the sustainability community here. And I was reaching out to people in the city, asking, where's the sustainability group? And I was told by more than one person, don't bring that word sustainability to us. And I was like, but wait, I didn't say climate change. I said sustainability. And right by then, the Pope is already talking about climate change. So anyhow, that was the start of sustainable revolution, Longmont. And the first thing that we did was put together this Youth Earth Council. And so we had amazing youth leaders, including Danny and other that you might remember that came up here and spoke to the council. They spoke to the school district. They were just incredible. We had twelve hundred people come to an Earth Day festival. And anyhow, I'm just so excited to see that now, as everyone has said, that Longmont is this island of sanity and a place that we can all be so proud of. So I just want to thank each and every one of you for making this step and for really turning this thing around. So thank you so much.
Dick Myron.
Hello, my name is Dick Richard Myron. I reside at twenty-four forty-eight Dodd Lane in Ward Three of Longmont. I am here this evening to request that City Council direct the city attorney and the staff of Longmont Power and Communications to gather and officially review and hopefully revise policy, which is presently an overburden to both disabled veterans and disabled Longmont citizenry that are on medical life support. Longmont Power and Communication presently offers a life support discount program to offset the electrical cost of operating various medically required in-home life support systems of various types. This discount amounts to twenty percent of the first seven hundred and fifty kilowatt-hours of electricity, or in reality, eight dollars and five cents per month. Not a large amount of money. Presently, Longmont Power and Communication requires those disabled veterans and other disabled persons requiring life support equipment to recertify each year, forcing them to obtain written certification from their physician, including the physician's license number, hospital affiliation, phone, and more. Again, this is required annually. In the case of disabled veteran, this means traveling to either Cheyenne, Denver, Fort Collins, or Greeley in order to get this form filled out, all for eight dollars and five cents per month. Since we are most likely dealing with permanent medical disabilities, wouldn't it make more sense to make available a self-certification statement under penalty of perjury to be signed by Longmont Power account holder for recurring applications that have retained the same patient information and account address? Initial applications could, of course, require the physician's certification, et cetera. Presently, I am sure that the value of the wasted time on the part of either Longmont Power staff, the disabled veteran, or the Longmont citizen expended to either process said applications of repeat support or having them filled out usually by the way, under objection by the physician, as I have found, costs a lot more than the eight dollars and five cents provided for. I am available for further assistance should City Council request. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Myron. Bryce Carter.
My name is Bryce Carter. I'm the Conservation Programs Manager for the Colorado Sierra Club. And Mayor Bagley, I just want to say thank you so much for signing the proclamation tonight, and we certainly applaud the leadership of Council and looking forward to the next couple of weeks to getting a resolution together. Your actions are not only taking action on climate, it's going to create jobs, and it's going to keep electricity rates low. You already heard a little bit about the impacts that obviously have experienced in this community. I actually helped organize, cleaned up at the utility yard here in Longmont, those many years ago, to get the sand out of equipment and so on. So seeing the impacts firsthand, it's devastating, and it's happening all over the world. But I think what's exciting is that, you know, this is part of a larger movement, and that's, I think, the main message I wanted to bring tonight. Sierra Club has our Ready for One Hundred campaign, and we're partnering with organizations across the country to lead for one hundred percent commitments. And whether it's us or other organizations, and our partnership with Sustainable Resilient Longmont has been tremendous, and Abby has been wonderful. We now have over fifty communities that have committed across the country for one hundred percent. And what that does is it brings collective bargaining power, it brings momentum, it brings accountability to the leadership and our utilities to move forward. And so the actions here tonight, I think, are going to have a ripple effect. And once Longmont finalizes the commitment, you'll be the sixth city in Colorado, following Aspen and Boulder, Pueblo, Maryland, and Breckenridge. And what I can commit to you tonight is that, as the Sierra Club, we are committed to working with you and offering resources. We have a technical advisory team that is led by volunteers that work in places like Enrel and Rocky Mountain Institute and other organizations that have the technical know-how and networks to be able to help find solutions and to also connect with our cities. In August, we had a gathering at Enrel with cities across the country to look at those solutions and to find those roadmaps forward to achieve one hundred percent. It's absolutely possible, and communities are doing it. And so I'll leave it at that, but again, just wanted to personally say thank you so much for your leadership, and we look forward to working together for equitable transition ahead. Thank you.
Thanks, Bryce. Dale Lannan.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilman. Dale Lannan, ten eighteen Pandarus Circle. I want to point out that the earth is in deep trouble. It looks like it might be too late to pull out and save the biosphere of the earth, the rate at which change is happening. If you just took the carbon dioxide, for instance, is increasing in the atmosphere at a rate that's over ten times as fast as anything in the geologic history of earth. This indicates that we'll see an extinction event greater than a Permian Triassic. We need to be prepared as best we can as a city and as a community and as leaders, particularly here in Boulder County. We need to actually grab this by the horns and face it squarely and with bravery. What's going to happen is going to affect the food supply and the rise of entropy, which is the increase in the inability to create work. And it's applied against the earth's biosphere because the money we use actually is the system isolation at thermodynamics, the separation of profit from consequence is the corporate model when they're set up. We, as a city, we have a thing, and our Plant Valley Power Authority and our city's commitment to 2030 zero electrical emission renewables, well, that's not nearly enough. We need to do drastic things. We need to make it so that the building separation isn't so that the fire would just jump in a firestorm of heat. We need to do things like set up bike trails that could actually use to get somewhere without getting wiped out. We need to be prepared and for food supply to get distributed, materials, supplies distributed in an orderly manner. And I have solar cells on my place and a flow meter out front that can run in and out, but I was only allowed to put so many panels up. And I think we should unleash that. People, if they're willing to fork over the dough to put out, you know, to get the panels on the buildings, we need to allow that. And we also, we need to do things that are forward-thinking in a logical manner and try to swing this earth, swing the world around so that the earth has its fighting chance. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dale. Judith Blackburn.
First of all, my congratulations to the new mayor and the two new councilmen, councilwomen and men, and the return of Polly. It's a pleasure to address you this evening for the first time for me, though I'm sure it's not the last. I, like many of my colleagues here tonight, am especially happy about the mayor's proclamation and the potential for a resolution of support from the rest of the council. It's not that we've solved the problem of how to hold off fracking out there near Union Reservoir or off to the east and south of us in Boulder County, but this still feels like a turning point of sorts, where we look toward what we want rather than fight what we don't want. My own personal hope is that this present council will lead Longmont toward that island of sanity that Aaron referred to, becoming a model municipality where the health and safety of men, women, and children, as well as the earth herself, are priorities. Along these lines, I'd like to suggest another way that I think this council could lead, and that has to do with water conservation. Since differences arose over funding the Windy Gap firming project, I've been thinking a lot about Longmont's water usage. I heard once that when explorers first set foot on this land, they lamented the fact that the area could never be developed because it lacked water. Yet here we are, almost a hundred thousand of us in Longmont, happily watering our lawns as if we lived in Ohio, with water drawn from the other side of the mountains. It pains me to see the extent of summer sprinkling that goes on here, much of it showering sidewalks and streets and then trickling down into the sewer system. It strikes me that the city could set an example to everybody by more creative use of zero scapeing on public property instead of overwatering, perhaps rewarding the city's many HOAs for doing the same, among other initiatives. Everything is related to everything. There are many steps toward co-creating the stable, sustainable, healthy future we want. The fracking ban bought us some time. The goal of renewable energy by 2030 is another step.
I'm sorry, Ms. Blackburn.
Let's keep this going.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jamie Simo.
Jamie Simo, five twenty-five East Sixteenth Avenue. On Wednesday, October twenty-fifth, the Planning and Zoning Commission heard a development request regarding an eight-foot variance to the one hundred and fifty-foot riparian setback for the Saint Vrain Creek that is required by the city code. It was clear to me in listening to the discussion that many questions could have been answered if staff from the city's Department of Natural Resources had been present. Such questions involve the ecology of the riparian area, the reasoning behind the setback, and the work being done as part of the Resilient Saint Vrain Flood Mitigation Project. Currently, there is no procedure in place to refer variance requests to the Department of Natural Resources when the request may impact a natural area, such as the Saint Vrain Creek corridor. In order to learn of variance requests, the Department of Natural Resources must either hear of it through word of mouth or through another informal channel. It does not strike me as productive for the left hand to not know what the right is doing when the left hand has the needed expertise. Therefore, I suggest that a standard operating procedure be put into place, requiring the Department of Natural Resources be consulted when variances are requested that may impact wildlife or sensitive ecological areas, such as the Saint Vrain corridor. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Simo. Jean Hook.
My name's Jean Hook, eleven sixty-three Columbia Drive. As usual, I'm about a week late and a dollar short, but I thought it was important to come and express myself nonetheless. So last Wednesday evening, I sat down to read the paper, as I am wont to do, and I got heartburn. And that's not unusual, but usually it's directed at the national political scene, not the local. So in this case, the local thing that upset me was that I noted that you seemed to ignore the results of an election that took place about a month ago, which is, we voted on a ballot for windy gap firming. Majority of the people voted for the ballot initiative, which allowed funding of up to ten thousand acre feet. Now, I recognize that didn't commit us to that, but it was up to that. So when I voted for it, I voted for it with the intent that it would be for ten thousand acre feet. And I believe most people had the same intent when they voted. If you didn't want ten thousand acre feet, you would have voted against it. But however, more than fifty percent of the people did vote for it. So I was quite distressed to see the council went back, looked at that, and ignored the results of that ballot. Now, I recognize that's your right. Nonetheless, we do live in an arid climate. Even though we have water rights, that doesn't mean the water is always available. And if you can't store it, you can't use it. So it just makes sense to look to the future and plan ahead. As many of these people are talking about, climate seems to be a little bit unstable. Snowpack's not always there. It seems that it makes sense to plan for the future, as our forefathers did here. I've lived here for forty years. I remember when they first started implementing windy gap. I was thrilled to death. I was very proud of the fact of our water supply here. We have first used water. It's great water. We can all be happy about that. So it seems like when we have an opportunity to take advantage of a cheap So it seems like when we have an opportunity to take advantage of a cheap, wonderful, plentiful water supply, we should do it. And again, we're not committed to using it. I'm all for conservation too. In fact, I think we should do a lot better. But the fact is, if you don't have the water stored, you can't use it. So you know the old saying about water in the West, which is whiskies for drinking and waters for fighting? I think we should be a little proactive, try to avoid the fighting in the future and do what we can now and be a little more forward-thinking like our predecessors were. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hook. Mallory Granger?
Hello, council members. My name is Mallory Granger. I live at 1420 Drake Street, and I'm here today talking to you just to raise awareness about my capstone project. I am currently a senior at the Silver Creek Leadership Academy and in the fourth year in which we create our capstone projects. Two years ago, I attended the Sister Cities Exchange to Ciudad Guzmán, Mexico, and it was the most amazing experience of my life. I met so many great people there, and I am so happy that we've had this sister-city relationship for over 20 years. This inspired me to make the, my capstone project, and in my capstone project, I am creating the Ciudad Gino Scholarship Program. And what this will be is it's going to be a need and academic-based program for the Sister Cities Exchange to assist kids who may be deterred from applying due to financial circumstances, so that they're really able to apply even if they may not be able to afford the entire program. My end goal is to have three $300 to $1,000 scholarships that are going to be application-based and handed out based off of, and I'm getting help with the board of the Sister Cities Association, to help me give out those applications and scholarships at the end. And to fundraise for my event, to fundraise for my program, I would like to hold a fun run, 5K here in Longmont. That's going to be completely family-friendly and oriented to really reach all depths of people here in Longmont, Colorado. I hope to hold this in August of 2018, near the beginning, when the delegates from all three countries are here in the tri-cultural exchange. And because I am, the main goal of me being here today is that I would like to invite all of you and the public to our Capstone Expo this Monday, December 11th, from 7:00 to 8:30. What it is, is all of the capstone projects in the Leadership Academy will be displaying their big capstone displays so that you can come and see what's really going on in the community and in this leadership program. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll donate, but don't make me run. Connor Hanson?
Hello, council members. Mr. Mayor, I'm Connor Hanson. I live at 1436 Tulip Street in Longmont, Colorado. And I'm here to raise awareness about my capstone project, which is Silver Creek CyberCorp. And what it is, is it's actually an intro to cybersecurity class and a cybersecurity club that will be offered at Silver Creek High School next year. And why I'm really here is I want to kind of raise awareness about cybersecurity in general. That's how I got started. It's a field actually growing by 350%, which is more than computer science itself. And it's becoming, in today's day and age, a basic knowledge to know about the importance of cybersecurity and computer forensics. So I would also like to invite you to the Expo, which is the Capstone Expo for Silver Creek High School, that is on December 11th from 7:00 to 8:30. And you can check out a bunch of SCLA capstone projects that are similar to mine, which is pretty cool. And my intro to cybersecurity class, I actually wrote curriculum for that class, and it got approved by the St. Verne Valley School District and will be offered at Silver Creek High School and the Innovation Center next year. So we're working with that and the Innovation Center to hopefully make that, get students interested in, into cybersecurity and the field in general. So thank you.
Thank you, Connor. It looks like we have Mattie Carr next.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mattie Carr, and I live at 5807 Blue Mountain Circle. I am also a part of the SCLA program at Silver Creek High School, and I'd like to give a quick spiel about my capstone project. It's called "For the Love of Food." The main purpose of my project is, yay, is to promote healthy eating through cooking classes. And the main audience of this focus are students as well as their families. Throughout the first semester, I hosted cooking classes at Burlington Elementary School once a month, and they cooked a lot of different things, including salads, dressings, cookies, a whole variety. And my hope is that they'll take the recipes and the knowledge that they learned in the class and apply it at the home as well. And I will soon be creating a cookbook that I will distribute to the students who participated in the class, as well as to the R Center. Then my next semester goals are to create a little free pantry, similar to the little free libraries that you may have seen around the city, where it's based upon a take what you want and leave what you can model. And once I find a location, I will let you know. Have a deliciously awesome night. Thank you.
Thanks, Mattie. Yeah, cookies are good, yeah. Adrian Rodriguez?
Hello, my name is Adrian Rodriguez. I go by AJ, and I reside at 1255 Brookfield Drive, Longmont, Colorado. I'm here this evening to talk to you about my capstone project, Sources of Strength at Silver Creek High School. And I also want to reiterate our invite that Mattie, Connor, and Mallory have issued to you all. We'd love to have you at the Capstone Project Expo. It'll be this Monday, December 11th, from 7:00 to 8:30 p.m., just in case you needed a reminder. Sources of Strength is my capstone project, and it is a program that's been around since 1998. It is an upstream prevention program. And what that means is that it is a program that is trying to provide the skills and the strengths to people that they will need so that they never get to a suicidal place. So it is a suicide prevention program, but it has the name upstream because it's trying to stop it from happening. So this program is very unique because it utilizes the presence of students in the high schools that it's implemented in. So on September 1st, I had a peer leader training where students came to the training, and it was four hours, and they have become peer leaders, and they've helped me implement this program for the last three months. There are eight strengths on the wheel, and if you come to the Capstone Expo, you can come learn all about the strengths. And basically, the reason I'm doing this project is because I really wanted to do a project that would be impacting students because this is our last chance before adults were almost out in the world and have to do adult problems. So, yay. So it's really important to me to make sure these people and these young adults know that it's important to talk about mental health and their mental well-being and suicide before they get out into the real world, because these are topics that need to be discussed because if they aren't discussed, it leads to isolation and the feeling of loneliness, and it just perpetuates the issue, perpetuates the issue. When I is replaced with we, illness becomes wellness. Together, we can spread hope, hope, and strength. Thank you.
Thank you, Adrian. Strider Benson, you're up, buddy.
Good evening. Strider Benson, 951 17th Avenue. Again, we see democracy in action here. And I, Brother Coleman, I recently learned, we were in the very same town on the very same day, 52 years ago during Hurricane Betsy in Mobile. I think my circumstance was a bit more difficult than his at that time, but hey, we do what we can. There is so much going on, and he talks about human interrelation and civility. And we have a person occupying the White House who has put his recent career into destroying civility in this country. He tweeted out Nazi propaganda from England last week. Probably will never be able to go to England, which is good for them, but, and the irony, probably the only good thing he's ever done in the last two years is getting out of the Paris Climate Agreement because then his agents will not be able to go there and destroy it. Every other country in the world is supporting the Paris Climate Agreement. The last country to get on board was Syria. Even Syria is there, but the United States is not. This is deadly serious. A few days ago, we had the second greatest theft in the history of this country. And 100% of the national Republicans, I hardly ever name, name a party, but they did it. 100% of them supported stealing several trillion dollars from the American people through the tax game and all of the other stuff. They also stole 2 million acres from our national monuments. Now, 25 years ago, I confronted James Watt personally, who assaulted me at the time, who was the first one to steal acreage. He didn't get acreage, but taking mineral rights in our national parks. He was indicted with 19 felonies, and he paid $5,000 for one misdemeanor and got off. That is the game. We have to recreate and rebuild democracy all the way up to the national level. If people don't pay attention, we won't have any left. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Benson. Leland Keller? You're the last one. Make it good.
Really? Okay. Well, good evening. Mayor Bagley and Council. My name's Leland Keller. I live at 1509 Donovan Place in Longmont, and I want to thank you, Mayor Bagley, for your proclamation. Thank you, Council, for your enthusiasm for renewable energy. As someone with 20-plus years of professional experience in sustainability, I'm here to tell you that 100% renewable energy supplying our grid is not just a dream, it is doable. And I'm here to tell you about how that's doable. It's doable when you follow and strengthen the sustainability plan that we've put in place here in Longmont. It's doable when you leverage Longmont Power and Communications efficiency programs to flatten our load growth. This has worked in California for the last 25 years or so. And efficiency programs are cheaper than any generation, as you'll see from the Platt River Power Authority Efficiency Works Evaluation coming out soon. When you leverage new time-of-use rates to lever, to levelize the system load, as Fort Collins is going to be doing in 2018, it's doable when you consider, this is just, just an idea, consider an appropriate bill adder for the health and environmental externalities from black energy generated from coal and burning methane. That could balance the cost of renewable energy if you need to make additional purchases. 100% renewables is doable when you pursue the best available competitive bids for utility-scale solar generation. Platt River Power Authority has bids in hand. And it's doable when you pursue wind generation. Again, very competitive pricing to secure power purchase agreements in Wyoming. I know that's coming. It's doable when you pursue supply diversity, and I suggest that you direct Platt River Power Authority to explore joining the Southwest Power Pool for wholesale, it's essentially a wholesale power trading market for balancing renewables across 11 states in the Southwest Power Pool. This is doable when you pursue load flexibility through demand response programs for reducing system demands instead of using gas combustion turbines. And load flexibility through behavioral programs for encouraging conscious consumption by consumers. This has proven to reduce 5% or more in use. And it's, it's doable when you pursue storage, not just intelligent control of domestic hot water heaters and ice storage for cooling, but also through employing batteries. And I implore you to-
Thank you, Leland.
-direct staff to fix the mic.
Thank you, thank you. All right, that will conclude first call. Public invited to be heard. So let's move on to our consent agenda. Dale, do you want to read our lone little ordinance we have for tonight?
Yes, Mayor Bagley, your only item on consent is Ordinance 201783, the Bill for an Ordinance Amending Chapter 14.04 of the Longmont Municipal Code on the Windy Gap Surcharge. And the public hearing and second reading of this ordinance is scheduled for December 19th.
Do we have a motion or discussion? Mayor Proton Christensen?
Sorry. I move that we pass Ordinance 201783.
All right, if there's no debate, let's go ahead and vote. That passes unanimously. We have no ordinances on second reading. We have obviously not removed anything from the consent agenda, so let's go ahead and move on to general business, specifically our land development code update.
Mayor, this one's going to be a fairly lengthy conversation, so I would say if you want to take a quick break now would be a-
How long's lengthy?
Nine, anywhere from an hour to an hour and a half.
All right, let's go ahead and take a five-minute break.
Julie said she needed 90 minutes.
You're welcome. That's, that's what I do. I just dress things up. If you, if you wanted, so.
That would be cool, so we don't have to say anything.
Can we tell Johnny that you're here and Johnny?
Awesome.
That would be cool, so we don't have to say anything.
Can we tell Johnny that you're here and Johnny?
Awesome.
That would be cool, so we don't have to say anything.
Can we tell Johnny that you're here and Johnny?
Awesome.
That would be cool, so we don't have to say anything.
Can we tell Johnny that you're here and Johnny?
Awesome.
That would be cool, so we don't have to say anything.
Can we tell Johnny that you're here and Johnny?
Awesome.
That would be cool, so we don't have to say anything.
Can we tell Johnny that you're here and Johnny?
Awesome.
That would be cool, so we don't have to say anything.
Can we tell Johnny that you're here and Johnny?
Awesome.
That would be cool, so we don't have to say anything.
Can we tell Johnny that you're here and Johnny?
Awesome.
That would be cool, so we don't have to say anything.
Can we tell Johnny that you're here and Johnny?
Awesome.
That would be cool, so we don't have to say anything.
Can we tell Johnny that you're here and Johnny?
Awesome.
That would be cool, so we don't have to say anything.
Can we tell Johnny that you're here and Johnny?
Awesome.
That would be cool, so we don't have to say anything.
Can we tell Johnny that you're here and Johnny?
Awesome.
That would be cool, so we don't have to say anything.
Can we tell Johnny that you're here and Johnny?
Awesome.
There's probably the most opportunity for those types of changes in these areas of change, where most of the changes that you'll see proposed for the areas of stability are going to be more akin to name changes for zones and more minor changes. So just keep that in mind as we go forward. So the first thing that we'll start with is the districts. And what we want to talk about is kind of how we're proposing to change some of these. Brian has at your desks a matrix, basically. This was an attachment. Thank you, Venna Schumacher. This is an attachment that we shared with the Planning Commission at their meeting, and it really shows kind of the mapping of districts. So how we're taking what today is a residential low-density district, what that's changing to, and the reason why. And so what you'll see in this table and what you see on this slide is the residential zoning districts, both current and proposed. You'll see that we're taking the eight residential districts that we have today. We're proposing to consolidate those into five. When we take a look at the map, you'll see the reasons for zoning changes. And in the residential districts, a lot of these are simply renaming districts and consolidating districts. So you can see that we're proposing, for example, that the estate residential, residential low-density, and residential low-density established all be consolidated into a single district. And so you'll see that, and the community will see that, as they start reviewing the zoning map conversion. Similarly, we've mentioned before that we're going from one mixed-use district to five proposed mixed-use districts. One of the things that we heard a lot through Envision is that we need to have more ability for people to do mixed use. We need to have more flexibility within our development code. And so one of the ways that we're doing that is looking at mixed-use zoning districts. So again, you'll see the five proposed districts here. Those will be replacing several of the non-residential districts that are in our existing code. For example, we have the commercial district that is primarily along Main Street and in some of our centers, you know, where grocery stores, for example, Seventeenth and Hoover are. Those would be being replaced with mixed-use neighborhood centers or mixed-use corridors. And then finally, we have a number of other non-residential zoning districts that are being mapped. Not really proposing any changes with agricultural or public districts, but we are proposing to consolidate our industrial districts into a primary employment district. You'll recall that we talked last time that our industrial districts are kind of being split out into primary employment and mixed-use employment. And so you'll see some zoning, again, based on that Envision land use map, that really looks at what is most appropriate for those properties that are currently zoned, either business light industrial, mixed industrial, or general industrial. Which of those new proposed categories would they be going to?
Can I ask a quick question? That rail park that we're doing away with, is that the same rail park up north? Are you getting your, I mean, does that, will that impact the rail park that we established six years ago? Who knows what's going on with that?
Mayor Bagley, the rail park zone is a zone that we added to the code several years ago. There's not actually any properties within the city that have been zoned rail park.
Right.
So a similar project, as to what we talked about, that could be rail-based, could potentially be accommodated, for example, in a non-residential primary employment zone.
I was just curious.
This is the existing zoning map. You can see, it's very colorful. There's lots of zoning districts in the legend. This is the proposed zoning map. So it looks relatively similar. Fewer zoning districts, some different colors. Probably the more informative map is this one. This is really, as we take a look at what we're doing, kind of the reasons for the proposed change. So we talked about last time in the conversion that we'd be consolidating districts, we'd be mapping new districts, we'd be renaming districts, and we'd be converting planned unit development, or PUDs. This map basically shows those changes in action. So you can see that magenta color, those are really all those zones that were renamed. So a lot of those correspond to those areas of stability, those residential areas. The purple, there's fewer of those. Those are our residential low-density established, mixed-density and E2 districts, those are being consolidated. The orangish color are PUD conversions. We talked last time that a lot of our planned unit developments aren't that unique, that they need to stay PUDs. They can likely be converted to a base zone, and so that's what we've taken a look at here. I will note that there are some PUDs, and we talked about this a little bit last time, that are really unique. They will likely need to stay PUDs. We haven't finished doing all the research, because each of these really has to be looked at on a case-by-case basis. And so you'll see several on this map that are still hatched. So that either means they likely need to stay a PUD, like Prospect, or we haven't done the research yet to determine if there's an appropriate base zone district. So it's kind of a work in progress. And then finally, the teal color is really where we have a zoning change for Envision alignment. So these would be areas where we're mapping new mixed-use districts, where we're going from one of those other industrial districts to a primary employment district. And so just to kind of close out the mapping piece, we are in the process right now of developing a side-by-side comparison tool that staff and elected officials, as well as the community, can use to take a look at specific properties within Longmont. So what you see here is the proposed zoning on the left, the existing zoning map on the right. It's interactive, so that if you zoom in on one, the other will zoom in, and then people can take a look and see, you know, what the zoning for their property or an area of interest that they have. Maybe it's an investment property or something. And then certainly, they can look at the use regulations and zoning district standards to see kind of what that change means. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Brian to talk a little bit more about some of the specific items we've been talking about within districts.
Thanks, Erin. Before we get too far afield, any questions regarding the, kind of just in general, about the zoning districts and kind of the process that we're going through with respect to the update to the zoning map? I did want to mention a couple of other items that was mentioned briefly at last week's pre-session meeting, that was requested that we provide to the council, and that's a couple of oil and gas maps that are also at your desk. I wasn't planning to cover those specifically as part of the presentation, but I do have those as a couple of slides at the end of the slideshow, in case there's some specific questions from council at the end of the presentation, if council's so inclined. So with respect to some of the more specific topics regarding zoning districts and the use regulations, just wanted to touch upon, in a little more detail, some of the items that we covered at last week's pre-session meeting. So regarding a topic of building heights. So last week, council briefly discussed building heights and what may or may not be, sorry, sorry. What may or may not need to be, may be appropriate in terms of building heights in our community. And I know that we talked about the Envision plan and how that lays out some guidance for the community as we look at our update to our land development code. And generally, Envision references one to four stories in terms of building height, depending upon the zoning district. It also mentions incentives for certain types of development. That may be things such as affordable housing projects, or it could be vertical mixed use, or it could be projects that are near transit facilities. So also wanted to provide, in a few slides, some examples of kind of some buildings that were built in the past with respect to taller buildings in our community, as well as some of the more recent taller buildings, and kind of give you some perspective. And then touch upon the, some of the discussion points that we had with the Planning and Zoning Commission regarding this particular topic. And then we'll talk a little bit about setback standards, kind of that notion about where buildings are placed on a property. And again, we'll provide an overview regarding the standards and our discussion with Planning Commission regarding the topics of reduced minimum lot sizes or setbacks to hopefully align better with the Envision density ranges for the various land use categories, particularly for the residential classifications. And then the whole notion about, particularly for mixed-use districts, about setback maximums or build-to lines. And I'll give you a few examples of how that comes into play with respect to the downtown and other mixed-use districts as well. So here's a little history on some of the taller buildings in our community. We'll start with the night, the one on the upper left is the same very main over at Sixth and Pratt that was built in the 60s. It's a six-story building, housing apartments, that's probably about 60 to 65 feet tall. Then in the 70s, up at Seventeenth and Main, we had the First Bank Building. I'm not sure what the bank was at the time it was built in the 1970s, but it's been a bank for a long period of time, as well as office uses. That's a five-story building. And again, that's probably around 60 feet, roughly. With the elevator shaft, it probably may go up to a 65 or 70 feet. And then the, what's called, I think it's called the premier building, office building, that was built near South Pratt Parkway and Delaware Place in the 80s.
Rose Building.
The Rose Building? Okay, thank you. I've heard it called premier, too. But anyway, that was built in the 80s. Again, that's a five-story building. And then more recently, we've had some of the taller buildings in our community. Longmont United Hospital, the, both the medical office building as well as the patient tower, that was constructed, I believe, in the late 1990s. You've got the Amgen facility, and that was constructed, started in the mid-1990s and continued through the 2000s. You've got the Roosevelt Park Apartments at Long's Peak and Main. That was constructed just recently, probably within the last three or four years. And then this past year, we have the Long's Peak Hospital. So in terms of building height, these facilities range from three stories to five stories in height. Building heights typically for these, these facilities are around 70 to 75 feet tall. You'll notice in the lower right-hand corner, the Long's Peak Hospital, most of the height is, is with respect to the entry feature, as well as the architectural roof feature, that adds to the additional building height. So I just wanted to give you some examples with respect to existing building heights in our community of some of the taller, taller buildings. So when we, when we spoke with the commission over a couple of meetings in, in October and November, we chatted about what's appropriate building heights. And so I know that the commission asked staff to consider and look at options for areas where it may be appropriate to consider additional building height. And as part of that discussion that we had with the commission, we looked at the Envision Longmont Plan, and specifically, the centers and corridors map associated with that. And that was used kind of as a starting point for areas that may be appropriate to consider additional building height, and that's kind of those focus areas for growth and reinvestment in kind of those livable mixed-use areas in our community. And this slide just notes some of the major corridors. It's noted on the map, as well as those major centers. So as, as part of that discussion, we also had conversations with the Downtown Development Authority Board about what's appropriate in terms of building heights in the downtown. Generally, the board felt that they would like to explore opportunities where appropriate additional building heights, particularly areas south of Third Avenue or south of Second Avenue, kind of down in the First and Main area, or redevelopment area. They thought that area was probably the most important or most appropriate for looking at opportunities for additional building height. So as I mentioned before, the Envision plan talks about generally one to four stories in terms of building height in the various zoning districts. Mixed-use districts typically four stories maximum as a starting point, but then also look at those additional incentives that might create opportunities for additional heights, such as, as I mentioned before, affordable housing with mixed use, vertical mixed use, or developments that are near transit facilities. And so based upon that discussion, we think that, you know, five and six-story buildings are not out of the realm of possibility in terms of what would be appropriate for Longmont in certain circumstances. So I'm just going to pause there for a moment, see if council has any thoughts or questions, concerns, before I move on. I know we're making great time. So moving on, I want to talk a little bit about building setback maximums. So this is just a couple, one graphic that we have currently in our, in our code regarding the mixed-use district. As Erin mentioned, we're expanding the number of mixed-use districts from one current mixed-use district to five. And there, it'll be implemented in a variety of different areas in our community and replace some of the current base districts, such as the commercial or business light industrial, or even the CBD district. So those will be all mapped to a mixed-use district. And as part of that...
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor Bagley, and...
Can you, can you get up there to the mic? I know that people want to hear you.
Is that better? Okay. I just would like to maybe get a recap. I think you've probably said this, but it didn't quite map to the, to what I was seeing. What, what are your motivations for, for dividing up some zoning districts and consolidating others? Is there, is there an overriding scheme that is maybe more detailed than match Envision Longmont, but less detailed than the full list of districts of types?
I mean, I think, I think in terms of the, the question about consolidation of zoning districts, you know, we're looking at opportunities to consolidate where it makes sense, where there are similar zoning districts that map to one particular land use classification of Envision. So for example, under the residential zoning classifications, we have the estate residential, we have the residential low-density, which is R1, and then we have the RLE, which is established low-density residential zoning classifications. For the most part, they're fairly similar in terms of dimensional standards. There's a few distinctions, but the overall goal is to try to create flexibility, but also simplify our code to the extent possible where it makes sense. And so in that instance, where we're consolidating or recommending consolidation, we feel that it's appropriate to consolidate those three zoning classifications into one residential single-family. Where the uses that are allowed under that zoning classification will be very similar to what's currently allowed under those three zoning classifications. There's a few distinctions, and we're, we're happy to, you know, pin, identify those as we go through this process. As we mentioned at the pre-session at last week's meeting, one of our overarching goals with this update is not to create a lot of non-conforming uses and to minimize those instances where that, that will occur, and to identify where those instances might happen, and to make sure that the council and planning commission and the public are aware of that as we go through this process. You know, a couple of instances with respect to, say, for example, the industrial zoning districts, where we've got some changes occurring, where, for example, you've got business light industrial, mixed industrial, and perhaps general industrial, all being mapped to a primary employment zoning classification. Those, those changes are predominantly based upon the changes that were adopted as part of the Envision Longmont Plan. And it's based upon conversations that we had with the, with the public and the community, changes that, discussions that we had with council, discussions that we had with the Longmont Economic Development Partners, in terms of what's appropriate and what we're trying to preserve in terms of primary employment areas. Sorry if I'm going long-winded, and please feel free to interrupt me if you have more specific questions or if I'm not answering your question.
I'll take it under advisement and see what comes out at the end. Thank you.
And, you know, and I would, I'll offer this also to any of the council members. We're, you know, in addition to, you know, tonight's discussion, you know, we're, we're happy as staff to meet with you individually, or as need be, if you have specific questions, if you'd like to stop by and discuss any questions you have regarding this code update, you know, we're happy to set aside time and, and answer your questions anytime, certainly. So with respect to building setback maximums, as I mentioned before, another component of the zoning districts chapter is, relates to building placement, how close a building can be or should be relative to the property line. So as I mentioned before, mixed-use districts, you know, that are intended to encourage more walkable and pedestrian-friendly developments, those setbacks typically are less, perhaps some of the other zoning districts, such as a, you know, an employment, primary employment type of district. I think a good example, as noted in this, these graphics and image up on the screen, is, is Main Street. And so under our current mixed-use district, we have this, this graphic on the left-hand side that shows a build-to line. That's a requirement in some, in our current mixed-use zoning districts. And it, and it aligns well with what we've seen historically in terms of development in certain parts of the community as well, particularly in the downtown, along Main Street, where we're trying to facilitate that pedestrian-friendly, scaled development. And so as part of this development, our development code update, you know, we're trying to make sure with the, the graphics that we're presenting as part of the code update align with what we're trying to achieve in terms of goals for the community, in terms of the types of development the community would like to see happen. Yes?
Mayor Protem?
Thank you. What is the setback on a Main Street sidewalk? Is it 15 feet or 10 feet or...
So along Main Street, we have a build-to requirement. So it has to be, the building along Main Street, particularly in the, well, for, for the downtown, anyway, currently, has to be built to the property line. So, so that, although there are a few allowances for, for like, where you might have an indentation for a seating area, so a certain percentage of that building frontage could potentially be indented from that build-to line. But for the most part, it should be built to the property line, so that kind of continues that, that building frontage appearance as well.
But what I'm asking is how, how wide are our sidewalks on Main Street?
How wide is the sidewalk?
Yeah.
Typically, from the, along Main Street, from the curb to the building, it's about 16 feet.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
So another example that's soon to be starting construction is the South Main Station Project, the Butterball Redevelopment Site. So in 2012, when the Butterball Site was rezoned, previously it was zoned industrial, it was rezoned to mixed use. First, the Main Transit and Revitalization Plan and the mixed-use regulations that we have on the books currently provided some guidance with respect to the Butterball Site redevelopment. And the intent was to have the building similar to the rest of the downtown area, have those buildings along Main Street next to the sidewalk to kind of continue that pedestrian, walkable development pattern that we have along the rest of the downtown area, and to take advantage of some of those ground floor uses, such as restaurant uses, that would have outdoor seating and gathering spaces as well. So there's other opportunities on some of the other buildings as part of this development along Second Avenue or Emery Street. There's a little more flexibility built in to the setback standards, but generally, the intent is to have the buildings fairly close to pedestrian paths and sidewalks. Again, it, it kind of comes around, it's, the intent is to implement that for some main transit revitalization plan, as well as our mixed-use regulations. Some of the other mixed-use districts that Erin mentioned, that'll be part of the mapping conversion and code updates, such as the mixed-use neighborhood, the mixed-use corridor, the mixed-use regional. Again, focus on that is try to create both vertical, as well as horizontal, mixed-use developments. As part of that process, the goal is to maintain and create pedestrian-friendly developments, but allow a little more flexibility in terms of building placement. So you, it won't necessarily have buildings placed right up to the property line, but they won't be necessarily placed as far back as some of the current developments that you've had that has been developed over the last 30 or 40 years in terms of larger So in terms of residential development, and I know this was brought up at last week's pre-session meeting as well, part of the update is to look at the density ranges that were adopted as part of the Envision Longmont Plan. And as part of that plan, the ranges changed somewhat to increase the density allowed in the various residential land use classifications, both the residential single-family, residential mixed neighborhood, as well as the residential multifamily. It wasn't a quantum leap, but there was some increase in terms of residential density to encourage opportunities for affordable housing through different develop, development scenarios and standards. And so one of the things that we're looking at with respect to this update, to be consistent with the Envision Longmont Plan, is to look at some modifications to our lot and setback standards. So for example, in the residential single-family, potentially reducing the lot's width from, to 40 or 50 feet from our current 60 feet. Also looking at reducing side setback requirements to a minimum 10-foot separation between homes on adjacent lots. And then also looking at reduced front setbacks to encourage, bring the homes, again, somewhat closer to the sidewalk, create a more pedestrian-friendly field, allow, have allowances for porches to be constructed on the front of homes. And so the intent of that is to look at creating more opportunities for affordability in terms of housing development in the community.
Excuse me. Councilmember Peck?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. Brian, just out of curiosity, in these pictures, the sidewalk, I don't know what you call that, between the sidewalk and the street that...
The tree lawn?
Yes.
Yes.
Some, I see some developments have that, and other developments have the sidewalk directly adjacent to the street. What, what is the criteria for that?
So for a long period of time, we had curb-attached sidewalks as our development standards for our streets, for, particularly for our local streets. It wasn't until probably about 10 years ago that that was changed, that we now require a detached walk in our new subdivisions with a eight-foot minimum tree lawn, with tree plantings in that tree lawn space as well. Certainly.
Mayor Protem Christiansen?
So that, the, this, what you're calling the tree lawn, which is what most of us call the hell strip, is something, is, in these developments, is that maintained by the homeowner? Does the homeowner own that, or is that owned by the city? Because in my, what I think is interesting about this is that all these things are what my neighborhood has always been since the 40s, when it was built.
It was part of the original town.
Yeah. 50 feet wide, 108 feet long, 10-foot minimum between buildings, 15-foot setback to the house, so you can build a porch if you want, but it's just 15-foot setback. And, you know, this makes it more affordable, and it also makes it more friendly, frankly, because you have less to maintain. But we do have to maintain the hell strip, even though it's the city's.
So I'll refer to it as a tree lawn.
All right. The tree lawn.
So it is in the public right-of-way, although it is the requirement of the adjacent property owner to maintain that area.
But you're not planting any trees here?
Well, that's just a picture. We do have, we do have requirements for plantings in the tree lawn areas.
Because ours... Because ours have big, beautiful trees.
Right.
And that really makes a neighborhood, a neighborhood.
Right. As part of our landscape requirements, we do have requirements for tree planting.
I like this because it, it really seems to afford, return housing to some kind of sanity instead of the McMansions that, I mean, that's fine if that's what you want, but most people actually just want a roof over their head that they can afford and that they can fix up.
Sure. So... Councilmember Martin?
Yes. I, again, perhaps I'm being obtuse, but why? In other words, what motivated the change from the 40s style, as Councilwoman Christensen was describing, to the attached sidewalk scheme that I think we all associate with the 60s and 70s and back? So, you've described what happened, but how come?
Well, it predates me. When we went from what was kind of the original town development to the attached walk design, I suspect part of it was kind of engineering, what's that? Well, engineering efficiency in terms of design. In terms of, you know, lacking of a tree, I, I, obviously, I don't know the, you know, the complete answer of why that was changed over time back in, probably in the 60s or whenever that occurred, when we started seeing some of our newer subdivisions with the curb-attached walk. I know that, you know, when I go out west to California, I see a lot of that as well. You know, I grew up in the Midwest and all development occurred with detached walks as opposed to curb-attached walks. So, I don't know if it's kind of a Western phenomenon, but it is what it is. But, you know, I think when we had some discussions with, regarding an update to our design standards and construction specifications, which are those design standards that are specific to kind of the public realm, streets and other public facilities, utilities, you know, when we last updated those in 2007, there was a discussion about, well, I think there was some outreach to the community and there was thought that, well, we should look at going back to that design where we have detached walks. Makes, it creates a more pedestrian-friendly atmosphere. You have the tree lawns with street trees that shades the public streets as well. And so, as I mentioned, that was about 10 years ago, as we kind of had a, an awakening and decided, hey, let's, let's decide to, you know, go back to the future, so.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I am actually a little bit, I would say conflicted on the quote-unquote "tree lawns." As, to me, as we're trying to head towards sustainability and attainability of housing and affordability of housing, it seems to me that square footage is at a premium. And so, this seems to be an inefficient use in consideration of citing homes and citing subdivisions by adding basically a not usable portion. Yeah, it's, it's pretty. I really enjoy our historic neighborhoods for this, but as far as looking towards the future, looking to the past, in my opinion, may not be the answer, especially when you look at some sort of, of concepts, when we're looking at 40 and 50-foot wide, single-family detached lots, and we're talking about design standards and setback standards. Now, we're creating a 10-foot, basically unusable swath of land on each side of the road that has no true, in my opinion, help in adding housing or, or making sure that we are efficiently using all of the land that we have to use. So, in that sense, I'm a little bit conflicted on this design standard, but I do not want us to get caught up on the weeds, caught up in the weeds on tree lawns either. So, I just want to make those two statements. Thank you.
Let's go with Councilmember Martin, then Mayor Protem Christensen, and let's go back to the presentation and try to hold off our additional comments. Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. Just to, to extend Erin's remarks a little bit, I would like to ask what motivates this and also to observe that this is a step backward in terms of sustainability because it's, it's land that needs to be irrigated, that's not used for anything. And looking toward the, you know, horizons three and, three and four in terms of the future, we think we're going to be narrowing streets, not widening them, so keeping it in reserve for, for that purpose doesn't seem to make sense. I'd like to ask what motivated the change, other than aesthetics?
So, I think that in some ways, this is something in planning terms, we kind of call traditional neighborhood design, and it is a nod to what, how cities were previously built. Typically, the tree lawn is within the right-of-way. So, in some cases, the tree lawn has resulted in a skinnier road, if you will. The pavement is skinnier, the sidewalk and tree lawn are still within the right-of-way, so it's not, it's not taking away property from a homeowner, it's part of the right-of-way. And in some cases, it, it could be seen as encouraging sustainability because it's impervious, it's pervious surface and can help treat stormwater versus impervious pavement where stormwater's going to run off. As Brian mentioned, you know, from a, from a placemaking standpoint, this is far better for pedestrians and cyclists, you know, people that are out walking, to encourage kind of places for people versus the attached sidewalk where oftentimes, you know, a car might park on the sidewalk or, you know, they're going much faster, the pedestrian wouldn't be separated from auto traffic, which can result in folks feeling less safe. And so, what we've heard, and this is really a nod to complete streets principles, which have been gaining popularity over the past couple decades, it's really, creates a much nicer place. And so, we should mention, while we are looking at, with our next batch of updates, and Brian will talk a little bit more about this, looking at our landscaping and open space standards, the design of the roadways, Locals, Collectors, Arterials is really part of our design standards and construction specifications, and so, that's where these street cross-sections really reside. So, when Brian mentioned the cross-section now on Locals where we have the eight-foot detached walk, or the tree lawn with the detached walk, that's really not part of our, our code update, that's really part of our design standards. And so, that's something we'll be looking at in the coming years to make sure that those are appropriately updated as well. But that, the tree lawn piece outside of landscaping isn't part of, of this code update.
Mayor Protem?
Okay. I'd like to put in a word for the tree lawn. When you look at this, it looks like they're watering it and watering it. In my neighborhood, nobody waters that at all, and it's full of, for each 50-foot wide lot, there are two 80-foot tall trees that shade the house, but we couldn't build, we only have a 15-foot setback to the house from the property line to the house. So, if we put those giant trees there, it would, it would destroy our foundations. So, it actually shades our houses and it creates a wonderful kind of little canopy. This is where the kids learn to ride the bikes, and this is where they play hopscotch and draw sock, stuff on the sidewalk. I would not want my kid playing right next to the street. This is our sort of safe zone for everybody to walk their dogs along and talk to each other and for the kids to ride their bikes and stuff like that. So, it really does create, when it's not like this, when it has lots of trees. And by the way, mine, I never water. It's where I, it was a giant cat box when I moved in, and I turned it into ziriscape, but I had to learn how to ziriscape. So, over the years, I planted more and more stuff, even though it was the city's lot, and I learned how to ziriscape. And so, it's a good area to, you know, experiment. My neighbor grows tomatoes on his front lawn, what is it called?
Tree lawn?
Tree lawn. Okay. So, I, I, I think it is not necessarily, I think, done right, like it is in a lot of the old town. It's actually an incentive for sustainability because it shades houses that don't have...
All right, Brian. I've seen another great gardens in the tree lawn area, in the old town area, certainly. So, just briefly, just wanted to mention, it's not part of the zoning districts and use regulations chapter, it'll be in the next chapter of development standards, but one of the things that we're also looking at with respect to conversation about affordability, reducing maintenance costs, water conservation, is our open space and landscaping standards and what, you know, what's appropriate in terms of new developments, new subdivisions, in terms of the amount of open space and landscaping that's required. And so, that'll be part of that conversation as we look at our development standards as well. So, I just wanted to kind of give you a preface on that.
Mayor Bagley and Councilmember Martin. So, I think you're asking a very specific question that, about where did, where was the genesis of the detached walk and why did we change to that? So, in about 2006, City Council directed what was then the Community Development Department to take a look at our design standards and specifications, and this was in a direct response to several annexations that were currently going through the system. One was in northeast Longmont, along Sundance Drive, and another was over at Hoover Crossing. So, we had a couple of very specific projects that were kind of looking to do what Erin mentioned, go back to a more traditional design. And then there was also some neighbor concern regarding direct access onto collector streets. So, Council directed staff to put together a steering committee. It consisted of community development staff. I recollect this because I was assigned to that group, along with our traffic engineer, two city council members, TAB members, planning commission. And so, it was a group of folks who really looked at the design standards and looked to do what I think Erin again alluded to was a complete streets and how to take what was that attached walk that didn't feel like it was very pedestrian-friendly and move that towards a different standard. So, that's, that's really why we did that in 2007. So, when we adopted what's currently our street standards, that's where that came from.
Thank you. All right. So, moving on to the use regulations. So, again, last week, we touched upon some of these topics briefly, and I know Council had several questions last week when we talked about attached housing, secondary uses, transition standards, and also heavy industry. And I've got some slides to, to prompt some thoughts or discussion on the next few slides. I just also wanted to mention, we'll follow up with respect to kind of the discussion that we've had with our Planning and Zoning Commission on these particular topics as So, a couple of the items that we discussed with Planning and Zoning Commission was how different housing types in some of the different zoning districts, and specifically whether or not we should consider, for example, smaller-scale attached housing in our residential single-family districts. That might be, there's a few photo examples on here. One might be the brownstone. I know we talked about that last week over by Fourth and Terry. And then there's another, on the upper right-hand corner, there's another picture example of smaller-scale townhome project in another community, not Longmont. But based on the discussion that we had with the, the commission was that they felt that that is appropriate to have a, a single-family residential district that's exclusively for detached, single-family homes. And that's consistent with the, those areas of stability that it's, that's outlined in the Invision Longmont Plan as well. I know we had some conversations about whether or not there might be opportunities for maybe looking at, kind of on the periphery of perhaps a single-family neighborhood where it interfaces with another zoning district, where there might be some opportunities to consider other attached housing types. But generally, I think the consensus of the commission was, single-family residential should be single-family detached. But I know at least one, if not several, of the council members suggested that we consider some, some options with respect to the single-family neighborhoods.
Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I'm, I'm that person. I really think there are some spots in some of our established, single-family neighborhoods that could very well use brownstones. It would be a better use of the land. And there, the ones that we've had in town have been very well done. So, as long as, that can always be an exception, I guess it doesn't bother me, but I would hate to limit, you know, have that strict red line, no, you can't do that because it's not zoned for that, because in some places, it'll be perfectly, could we make it a conditional use maybe in a single family, a conditional use or something like that?
Councilmember Finley, that's, that's certainly an option. We could consider that, and that's something we discussed with the commission. And, you know, we may have some locational criteria, association...
Yeah. And it, it may not be, there are, there aren't very many places where that could even happen, but in the few places where it could, I would like to be, I would like to see it available, I guess.
Councilmember Peck?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I agree with Councilwoman Finley. I think that adds diversity to a neighborhood and it definitely increases our, our housing inventory. So, I also think that that should either be put in the zoning or conditional.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I also find it an appropriate conditional usage because I do know that at some points, you know, as, as projected development comes in, sometimes it stalls for whatever reason or, you know, in 2008, 2009, obviously, there was the downturn, and we saw a bunch of kind of half-finished subdivisions. And I know that certain ones of those subdivisions are still having somewhat of an issue of filling out, if you will. The projected and allowing a conditional usage might be a creative way to actually finish some of these subdivisions. So, I would, I'd probably support something like that. Thank you.
All right. We'll proceed on looking at...
Mayor, mayor, sorry. Go ahead, Brian. Sorry.
No, I was just going to say, given the, the feedback we've gotten from Council on this particular item, we'll look at options for incorporating that into the, the update, certainly. The other item that the, the commission discussed was whether or not to consider single-family detached as an allowed use or permitted use in the downtown area, the mixed-use downtown zoning district in particular. I will say that historically, single-family homes have been a part of that fabric since the, you know, the construction of the original town. And there, it creates opportunities for small businesses, and there's been instances where, you know, property owners have gone from a single-family home to a small business, back to a single-family home. So, I think it creates some flexibility in terms of potential startup business in the downtown as well. And I think it also affords an opportunity for providing some of that transition from more intensive uses in the, in the downtown to the surrounding historic neighborhoods and some of the other residential neighborhoods as well. Based upon that discussion that we had, the commission, the, the commission general consensus was, yeah, sure, that sounds good. It's been part of our central business district and it makes sense to continue forward with that in terms of an allowed use in the downtown area.
Mayor Protem?
I certainly applaud that. And in fact, it is the single-family homes that were there first, and the businesses have kind of encroached upon them. So, it creates a, it does create a transition zone where you can zigzag in and out and, and as you say, it's, it's always, they go back and forth between residential and business, and that's, that's fine because it creates a much more lively area. I mean, if you look at Lucille's, which used to be a, a house, and now it's a restaurant, and maybe it'll go back to house someday, but I hope not. Yeah, I, I think that's a, a great way to keep it as a transitional zone, and I would... way to keep it as a transitional zone, and I would encourage you to keep that.
Councilmember Peck.
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. Brian, I noticed that in downtown, we do have some lofts above the retail and, for example, in is it called China Panda? On the corner of Third and Main, they have apartments at the top. But I also noticed that there is an apartment on the lower level on Main Street between Third and Fourth. So my question, is that an allowable use to have the bottom part of a multi-story building on, on Main Street between, well, in that, in that Main Street zoning as a residence?
Great question. I know I've had this conversation with LDDA staff and the board on several occasions. I know, I know of the specific use that was there until recently. I think it's been converted into a retail space. We currently do not have a prohibition about single-family residences on Main Street, although that was part of the conversation that we had with the Plan Zoning Commission regarding the code update. They certainly felt that it was appropriate to consider and allow single-family detached, except perhaps maybe not on Main Street. So I think that's, that'll be one of the caveats that we build into the, into the code update.
Is there anyone who feels that we should not allow single-family detached housing downtown? Is, do we have consensus? That's the direction we're giving staff? Okay. No meaning, meaning that we've got, we can continue talking about it, but I'm just saying that if we're gonna give consensus. Mayor Protem.
I know there's a, a residence hotel, or there was, I don't know. It kind of seems to be a little shaky down there, but just south of, um, Third. And that seems to me perfectly okay.
I was referring to single-family detached, not a, not a multifamily type of development.
Councilmember Peck.
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I, I'm not sure that my question was answered or that I understood it, the answer. I was talking about retail on the bottom on Main Street. Retail is on the lower level. But there are, there is at least one shop or one apartment on the lower level. A, a retail shop that has been converted to an apartment. Is that allowable? That, that was my question, not a detached. Am I making sense?
You're making perfect sense, and I apologize if I didn't answer it completely. It is allowed currently. We're looking to change that so that, you know, the ground floor or single-family use would not be allowed on Main Street. All right, we're at about an hour, so we're gonna move along here, to the extent that we can. So, uh, next item, secondary uses. Again, last week, we talked about, a little bit about this. And this is mentioned specifically in the Invision Growth Framework chapter. It talks about primary and secondary uses for each of the various land use categories. And so as part of this update, we wanted to look at what's appropriate in terms of mix of uses for the various zoning classifications that we have, both for the mixed-use districts, as well as perhaps for some of the residential zoning districts as well. And so as part of our discussion with Plan Zoning Commission, one of the topics we discussed, for example, was whether or not in the residential mixed neighborhood and residential multifamily neighborhood zoning districts, we should consider allowing, under certain circumstances, or through, for example, a conditional use process or a secondary use review process, some smaller scale walkable, uh, commercial uses such as office or restaurant or small-scale retail uses. Not necessarily in the residential, single-family districts, but perhaps the residential mixed and the residential multifamily. General consensus, I think, from, from Planning Commission was yes, that, that would be appropriate under certain circumstances. They felt that we should probably have some type of secondary use review built in to take a look at that, have some standards and criteria to evaluate those types of uses against. But in certain circumstances, try to incorporate those walkable uses in, in some of our residential districts makes sense.
Councilmember Martin.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Bagley. Can you hear me? Sorry. It seems to me that, that those uses might significantly change the traffic pattern in the residential area. What, because there would be a lot more coming and going, but a lot maybe more, more vehicles focused on this, on a single address than is likely to happen with residences only. What, um, how, how does the code account for that? Is there a possibility for underground parking or, you know, some other provision for, for not causing congestion in parking for the residents?
Our code really doesn't address it currently because we don't have this use that's allowed in our residential zoning districts. So small-scale, commercial restaurant uses in our residential zoning districts. So this is something that we're contemplating adding as part of that review process associated for a secondary use review or conditional use review, however, that's, that's stipulated. You know, one of the components that we need to look at is, is it at appropriate location? And some of the, some of the locations we're considering is perhaps along our, our busier streets where it might be more appropriate, such as along an arterial or Collector Street, or at the intersection of an arterial and a collector. And then is the location appropriate? Is there adequate parking or other facilities available to accommodate that, that type of use? Is there on-street parking available? Is there parking available on-site? Or in a nearby existing parking lot that's, or, or underutilized? So obviously, those are all factors that we need to take into consideration when we consider a secondary type of use in a, in a residential zoning district.
Mayor Protem Christiansen.
The West Side Tavern is in my neighborhood.
Crap. I'm sorry. Sorry. There's nobody here anymore.
Point of order, point of order.
I'm sorry. I apologize. So the West Side Tavern is in my neighborhood, and I can walk to it. It's three blocks away. And it's very, very tiny. And so it can only have a certain number of cars. So please don't destroy that. And it, it's historic. It, that's why it's there because it has always been a neighborhood gathering place. Before that, it was Richards. And before that, it was the little place that my son went to get potato chips and milkshakes after school. And before that, it was a grocery store. So since 1900, it's been a tiny little place, and it's limited, but it's terrific because we can walk to it, get some great food, have something to drink, and walk home. It is getting a lot of cars there, but that'll, you know, in the summertime, people do walk to it. So I think it's a very, very good use. But you also do have to be careful about where these things are located. This is on Third Avenue, and it's not a particularly wonderful place, but to, to have it, but it's always been there. So new places, I think we should be particularly careful about getting the neighbors involved and make sure that they okay it.
Councilmember Peck.
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I'll make this real short. So if you are considering the zoning co-change for arterial streets, which are very busy and will take up on, on-street parking, consider crosswalks and ways for people to get to and from these places, because that is a problem with the West Side Tavern. So, thanks.
Just one other brief example in terms of secondary uses are some of our mixed-use districts. For example, our mixed-use employment or mixed-use regional center. As part of this update, one of the secondary uses mentioned in the vision is, is multifamily and incorporating multifamily uses in those, in those mixed-use districts to create more of a, kind of a walkable community. You know, one example would be the, the Village at the Peaks and, you know, the, the Walmart that was, that was torn down. It might be an opportunity for some multifamily in, in that vicinity as well. That's just one example of kind of that mixed-use regional center where you could integrate some residential uses into that, that regional center, commercial center. All right, moving on, transition standards. As, as I mentioned last week, I think the bulk of the transition standards will be coming in the not-too-distant future, next few weeks, with our development standards chapter. But there's a variety of different ways to address transition standards. And I know some of our residential neighborhoods, particularly the historic neighborhoods in the downtown area are very interested in this topic. We've had conversations with representatives from the neighborhoods. I know they've talked to the LDDA board as well. We've had conversations with the LDDA staff about this topic. But it, it applies, it can, it can apply broader than just in the downtown area. Anywhere where you have an interface between a more intensive zoning district and a lesser intensive residential area where these transition standards could apply. And these outline just some examples of what will comprise the transition standards. We currently have in place in our code what's called residential protection standards, which are basically, for the most part, separation requirements between certain types of uses, more intensive types of commercial or industrial uses and residential areas or resident, residential districts. In certain circumstances, it's, it's worked well, and others, it hasn't worked as well. And so we're looking at opportunities to create a little more flexibility, maybe utilize both separation requirements as well as performance standards, depending upon the type of use that you're looking at. And so that's why we're looking at building in as part of the development standards chapter, transition standards that would apply for that interface between more intensive and less intensive zoning areas.
And Brian, when will we see those details?
So we are planning to have the development standards chapter working draft out in a couple of weeks for public review.
After the first of the year?
Actually, before Christmas.
Okay, all right, cool. Thanks. Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I know over the course of the last few months, I've been told by a lot of people, and whether it's correct or just their interpretation or not, I'd like some clarification. I was told that Historic West Side has transition standards, whereas Historic East Side does not necessarily. Is this maybe where you're talking about residential protection, the residential protection standards that you were just mentioning? And if so, is there a difference between West Side and East Side on Main Street? Thank you.
I think the primary distinction between the West Side, Historic West Side neighborhood and Historic East Side neighborhood is there's a distinction in terms of what the current zoning is between the two different areas. So for example, the West Side neighborhood has, is predominantly R1, residential low-density zoning classification. The East Side neighborhood is an RLE or established low-density residential zoning. The distinction between the two is that the East Side neighborhood zoning, the RLE zoning, does allow for some attached housing, smaller-scale attached housing. I'll go back a little bit in time. Prior to 1980, the East Side neighborhood was zoned R3 or higher-density residential zoning in that. Due to some concerns raised by the neighborhood in the 1980s, they came to council at that time and asked for a zoning change. And as part of that discussion with council at that time, zoning was changed from a higher-density residential to a, what's called the RLE zoning, which is predominantly single-family, but it does allow some attached housing, smaller-scale attached housing on a case-by-case basis through a conditional use review process. I don't know if that completely answers your question, but we don't have a distinction in terms of residential protection between the West versus the East. It's just a distinction in terms of the zoning classifications.
Sorry. So there is no quote-unquote "transition standards" already in place on the West Side?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, moving on. So these are just a few visual images of some examples where you might have an interface. You have a, the upper left is kind of a use separation where you have an auto repair body shop next to a single-family home. Under our current standards, we do have a separation requirement for those types of uses in our residential protection standards. Then you also have what's referred to as kind of building scale and design compatibility or a screening and buffer standards. And those are all things that we're gonna be looking at in terms of where you might have interfaces between multifamily uses, single-family areas, commercial uses, single-family areas, those types of interfaces where the scale of the building, the design of the building, kind of the hours of operation of a commercial use, or some of those nuisance factors in terms of noise or odors come into play. So those are types of standards that we want to put in place and have in place for kind of those transition areas. And then finally, we talked a little bit about this last week, about heavy industry. And I got the sense that based upon the, at least the preliminary conversation was that, you know, council felt that it wasn't really necessary for Longmont to have a heavy industry classification. You know, there, these are just a few examples of the types of heavy industry that some communities have. And it's mostly, for the most part, larger metropolitan areas where they might have large refineries or rendering plants or hazardous material processing. Some communities do have salvage yards. We have a few that are kind of non-conforming uses that were annexed in. They existed at the time they were brought into the city, so they're non-conforming uses. And they'll continue as non-conforming uses. But for the most part, I got the sense from, at least from council from last week, that they're not interested in having that heavy industry type of use as a use classification. Under our current draft, we didn't carry forward that heavy industry use. Planning Commission just did discuss that and decided if, if it were important to have it, it should be a conditional use, and there should be specific locational criteria or standards that would be in place with respect to any type of heavy industrial use. So.
I would actually move that we do not have a heavy industry class, classification in our land development code. That way we get four and it's just official. Any debate? Or can we take a vote? Let's vote. Yes, yes means no heavy industry. At least it's gotta come back for a vote. And that passes unanimously.
All right, we're on the home stretch here. So next steps, as Erin mentioned, we're working on the zoning map conversion. We're planning to have that out same time. In the next couple of weeks, we have the development standards and also our signed code, signed standards. Draft chapters out for public review. And we'll follow that up. We'll get those posted on our. those posted on our website. As Aaron mentioned, we're working on the kind of that side-by-side comparison tool for people to take a look at the existing and proposed zoning and use classifications under the various zoning scenarios. And so, we'll follow up in terms of getting the information out to the public with meetings with Planning and Zoning Commission in January. And then, we'll also have drafts of the development procedures and some of the other general provisions, such as nonconformities, penalties, enforcement. Those will be out in January for public review as well. You know, the end goal is to get for an adoption hearing before the Planning and Zoning Commission this spring, as well as to city council as well. Obviously, in terms of the development standards, signed code, development procedures will be having, coming back for a discussion with city councils as well, just to kind of fill you in on our conversations with Planning and Zoning Commission to make sure we're headed down the right path on this project. So, that concludes my remarks. So, any other questions from council? Happy to respond.
Mayor Protem Christensen?
We currently, I don't know if this is something you're dealing with, but we currently have a minimum size of a house, and it's 800 square feet. And there are minimum sizes for rooms. Are we going to reconsider that?
Yes, I believe we are removing that from our land development code, and whatever is required in terms of minimums, habitability, in terms of building code requirements, that would be the standard. Because the building code does have some minimum standards in terms of square footage for habitation, but it wouldn't be in the land development code.
Oh, okay, thank you.
All right, if that's it, and there's no further questions, before we go on to the calendar, does everybody, is it okay if we take a five-minute break? All right, great. All right, good, good. Let's take a five-minute break.
Thanks.
All right, let's go ahead and start in on council calendar.
Mayor Bagley, we have, put in your pocket, and I have up on the screen, so it should be displaying a calendar for each month. We do this once a year so that we have planning opportunities throughout the year, and we can, staff knows what meetings have been canceled and which ones they can place items on. So, generally, especially for the new council members that we haven't gone through this before, we have two study sessions, two regular sessions a month, and sometimes we have five Tuesdays in a month, and council has typically chosen to eliminate some of those. You don't have to. You can have three study sessions if you want to. But for January, there are five Tuesdays. And so, one of those typically has also been an open forum. So, we need to know, first of all, do you want to designate one of your study sessions as an open forum? I'm seeing shaking heads. Okay.
I think January looks great, but I think we should cancel the second due to being in close proximity to New Year's Day.
Yeah, okay. Then, moving on to February.
Follow my lead, people.
I don't know. Hang on. Okay. February has four Tuesdays. You have to have two regular meetings. So, I just need to know direction on February.
That look good?
Yep.
March? I don't know how to do that. Thank you. There are four, just our general four meetings. We do have National League of Cities Conference in there that many council members often go to. And then the St. Rain Valley Spring Break, just for your information.
Well, I was going to also say, I'm planning on going with my family somewhere. Haven't decided yet what. Can't go nowhere? I'm the king? Thanks, Bonnie. Yeah, well, is it possible to do two regular sessions on the 6th and the 20th?
Yes, you can move those studies, you can change your regular sessions to the 6th and the 20th if you want to.
And then can we, and then can we cancel the 13th and 27th and make up for it hopefully in April?
As long as we know in advance what our planning opportunities are, then we can do that. No. So, 6th is a regular session, and cancel the 13th, and the 20th is a regular session and cancel the 27th.
Right, I just want to make sure we can get our work done.
Okay, so it looks like no study sessions in March, and we move those dates to the 6th and the 20th. Okay. April, four meetings.
Who's going to NLC this time? I'm actually going to go for the first time, just curious.
So, you can see there's...
We all going? Right.
You won't have, yeah, you won't have a forum.
First time ever, baby. Woo, party. We'll rent a bus, yeah. Yeah, road trip.
Okay. April, it's a pretty standard month.
I'll get you guys. We're waiting for April to come up.
Oh.
Hannah fell down on the job.
Is everybody going and...
Whoa, whoa, I'm not even touching it.
Oh, here.
I got it.
And the rest of the year is canceled.
I don't know. I use this. Okay, April's a pretty straightforward month.
That looks good, right?
Right. May, again, has four, I mean, five Tuesdays.
Do we go to May?
So, you have one right after Memorial Day, sometimes that...
Cancel that one.
Okay. June, your CML conference is the third week, which is a study session.
Can we cancel the 19th? Who's going to CML? Everybody? Okay, all right, cancel the 19th. We'll be working up there.
All right.
Can we have our meeting up there?
No.
Come on, John.
No, the charter prohibits that.
I'm kidding.
July, again, you have five Tuesdays.
Cancel the 3rd?
Cancel the 3rd, okay. August is a pretty straightforward month. Oh, wait a minute, we have...
Oh, Mayor Protem Christensen?
I would like to have two forums this year. Could we consider doing that in July or September? It's totally up to council.
Sure, what about the 17th? September, we're going to need for budget.
What about the 17th of July?
So, an open forum on July 17th, and a study session on the 31st. Okay. And then August, you have a pretty straightforward month, four Tuesdays. All right. September, typically, we don't cancel anything because you do need those for budget, even though there is one right after Labor Day.
Okay, keep it.
October, there are again, five Tuesdays. A lot of five Tuesday months this...
Cancel the 30th? Oh, yeah, the 30th, yeah. Although, it would be, you know what, it would be cool just one time to come in costume for council. We could have, like, all the kids come, yeah, exactly. We could have kids come in. All right, let's cancel the 30th.
Okay.
Jim, I want to look at you. What we need, you're not wearing a costume?
I move that city staff be required to wear costumes.
Okay, November, November, there's a National League of Cities Conference again.
Yeah, let's cancel Election Day.
Okay.
Plus, we're also maybe going to NLC.
Do you want to, you want to still meet the week of Thanksgiving? Okay.
Probably not. I don't think so.
You could...
I say we cancel the 6th and the 20th. The only thing is that city staff, I mean, yeah, we can add it back in, but I'd rather cancel it for now.
Or you could leave it on, and we could encourage people not to put anything on it, and then we can just cancel.
Let's take it off.
Harold can cancel it.
Yeah, but if we take it off, then you've got to, like, actually proactively try to put it back on. Whereas, if we leave it on, it's like, somebody might go, you know what, it'd be really nice to just come in for an hour and just do this. Let's take it off, right?
Okay.
Uh-oh, Mayor Protem's humming and hon over here. All right, let's leave it on.
Let's say, Mayor Bagley, just a note. So, in the past, that is what has happened. You have left it on, and then at the last minute taken it off. That's not, that creates more issues. So, if you really think you might want to take it off, you should take it off. And we'll work around it. That's what happened this November. That's what has ended up happening many Novembers. Just a point.
So, those, is that an on or off for that week?
Leave it on, like, always. Do what we always do. Is that what you were saying? It's the other way. Take it off and then put it off. Let's take it off. Is it okay? I'm just, I'm going to defer to Mayor Protem. Are we working on Thanksgiving?
Do what Sandy says.
Okay. Let's keep that. We're undedicated.
Typically, we have to move that session, so... Do you want to just move that back to the 18th and have back-to-back regular sessions, which is typically what we do in...
Yeah.
In...
Hold on, hold on.
December.
Yeah, we're going to have back-to-back no matter what.
We did not put retreat on this particular agenda because I just didn't...
We're going to bring that to you all.
Well, one, we have, we probably need to wait till you have a full council, which would be after February sometime, so... So, the other thing you will see on this calendar, we have marked Coffee with Council days. And so, Maria typically assigns council members to that, puts it on your calendars, and then if you have a conflict and need to change, you switch with another council person. So, we're going to proceed with that. I think she's already put a couple of them out there already. That seems to work pretty well. You guys exchanging dates that don't seem to work for you, rather than try to figure out who's here on particular days. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Val. Councilmember Pack?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I saw Eugene May kind of frowning when we were all going to NLC. Is there a problem with all of us going on an out-of-town trip?
Mayor and council, Eugene May, city attorney. So, then the city would have no mayor.
It would be, what's the difference between what it is now, Eugene?
And the difference with CML is that you're in-state, and usually, you know, you're available. You know, I've been here eight and a half years. I've never seen an emergency that the absence of a mayor would be a problem.
So, you're saying it's okay?
I'm saying there would be no mayor.
I'll fly back if necessary. Rent the company jet.
So, in terms of any kind of disaster, I think in that case, I actually, I have the authority in any type of disaster. So, no, no, no. So, I mean, I think in terms of that, that sort of gives me the ability to do it. I think if, well, no. So, what I was going to say is I was thinking about going, but if all the council wants to, then I can just, I'll stay. And that should be able to...
You know, other than signing, I mean, other than setting the agenda and signing some documents...
Correct, that's what I was saying, in most cases.
I mean, what would I do if there was a disaster, other than stand by your I mean, what would I do if there was a disaster, other than stand by your side and make you look good?
So, I think we can work, we'll figure it out, and we can work through the issues. We just, it was, you caught that, we were like, oh, what do we do? So, we weren't sure. He was reading it as we were trying to...
But I'll give you a hug before I leave, and I'll promise to come back.
Mayor Bagley.
Yes.
I just want you to know, I will bring an official list back for your consent agenda for you to adopt on the 19th of these dates.
Great, thank you. All right, if there's no one, if there are no other, ah, Mayor Protem Christiansen.
Val, when you bring that back, will we have all the Coffee with Councils laid out?
The dates are already established for Coffee with Council. They're on this calendar.
Oh, I know, but not, we don't have the particulars.
Those will come from Maria. I can see what she's got available. What I'll bring back for the meeting is an actual consent agenda item to adopt the minutes, but I can certainly put something, an information item for you. All right, thanks.
I think the answer is yes, we'll try to have it all done for you.
All right, if there are no other comments or inappropriate jokes regarding our calendar or the importance of the mayor, let us go on to a final call, public invited to be heard. If there's one member of the public, would you like to say anything? Good sir. All right, thank you. All right, then mayor and council comments. Councilmember Pack.
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I would just like to let you know that there's going to be a public forum that our RTD director, Judy Lubow, and I put together. It's going to be, yeah, and that's it, goodbye. It's going to be next Thursday, December 14th, at Indian Peaks Elementary from 6:00 to 7:30. I am going to be giving an update on where the city is at this point on the Northwest Rail Corridor. If anybody would like, on council or staff would like the PowerPoint that I put together, let me know, and I will send it to you. One, two.
Yeah, all of us, just sending it.
Okay, great. Also, I would like to thank staff for the, what are we calling those? Displays. They made displays of what our transit center is gonna look like, and it is in, and where it's going to be located. We have one in the civic center, one in the library, and I think the museum. I'm not quite sure where the third one is at this point. But we're trying to just market what we're doing and where we're going with our urban design and transit center. Thank you.
Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I want to remind everybody about the parade, for the Christmas parade on Saturday night, and the light thing on Friday night at Roosevelt Park. If you haven't been by there, the lights on the trees, they're beautiful, they're absolutely beautiful. And I hope other council members are riding in the parade.
We're gonna have a fire truck.
It's gonna be fun, and everybody should come. Thanks. Dress code?
Swimwear.
We wore costumes.
Swimwear and a scarf.
Dressed warm.
Mayor, Mayor Protem Christiansen.
Well, I'll steal Bonnie's standard business of the week, but this is not really... Oh, all right. Okay. So, today I was buying replacements for all the stuff my son stole when he moved out. I went to the kitchen store, and I have, I have been meaning to go there since it's opened, and I'll tell you, if you eat or breathe, you will be able to find great Christmas presents there from 50 cents to thousands. So, stop by, support a local business, and have fun for Christmas.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. Kind of to piggyback off that one, Mayor Protem Christiansen, Second Friday this week here in downtown Longmont is also retail Second Friday. So, also another great opportunity to come shop small and shop local. Thank you.
My only comments were, one of the reasons why I decided, I don't see anybody else on the list, so I was just gonna say, the reason why I decided to do the proclamation, over the last month and a half or month, talking with Tom Roniotis, talking with Jason Frisbee, with Platt River, it doesn't, a lot of people have been giving me grief this week about, you know, the proclamation, but it makes good economic sense. And when I, I'm not just saying that hypothetically, we're gonna be closing down one of our power plants in 2025, we're gonna be closing down Craig Number Two shortly thereafter, and when you look at the cost of building a new coal-powered power plant, and the Craig Coal Plant sit right next to a mine, that even though it's right next to it, it's not on the surface, you gotta dig to it, and it costs a lot of money, and it's way cheaper to buy Wyoming Wind. And so, rumor is that within the next 12 months, we're gonna be over 50% carbon-free energy. So, I mean, we're gonna really be moving here pretty quick. So, it doesn't, it's not just carbon mitigation, it makes economic sense. And I'm looking forward to Thursday when we can, you know, start really diving into things. I think people will be excited. So, if there's actually, city manager, remarks?
The only remark I have is to, remark I have is to remind mayor and council that before the parade, you all have boarding commission interviews Saturday, so I just wanted to make sure and remind you all on that. No other comments.
Yes, come in costume.
Just let me know, because I think I'm on there with you all, so I don't want to be the odd person out if you're in costume.
Actually, wink, wink, we're gonna all wear costumes, Harold. We're dressing like an elf.
So, what I will tell you, when I've done that in the past, and they've tried to do that, I've actually shown up with something, but I wasn't wearing it. I made sure.
All right. Eugene, city council remarks?
No comments, mayor.
All right, this, notice, I'm not gonna screw up, I'm gonna actually use the gavel this week. Adjourned. See that? There's, I mean...